I'd like to call the Monday, February 25th, 2019, meeting of the Anderson Township Zoning Commission to order. Would you take the role, please?
Mr. Boone? Ms. DiBaggio?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and I would like to suggest an amendment to that agenda to vote on a new vice chair. I'm going to recuse myself from that role. Is there a motion for a new vice chair?
I move and nominate Ann McBride as our vice chair.
I am actually the vice chair, and I'm recusing myself from that role.
You're accusing yourself from that role. Okay, sorry.
Jay for vice chair and Jonathan for chair.
Thank you. I nominate Jay Lewis for vice chair and Jonathan Gothard for chair.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Ms. DiBaggio?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, and we'll now take the approval of the minutes of the January 28th, 2019 meeting. Do we have the right folks here? Okay. You take a roll, please. Our motion to approve, I guess, the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes that's presented.
I abstain.
I'll second that.
Okay, please take the roll.
Mr. Boone?
Abstain.
Ms. DiBaggio?
Approve.
Mr. Henson?
Approve.
Ms. McBride?
Approve.
Mr. Lewis?
Approve. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item three, and if anyone's here for that case, it was case two dash 2019 PUD for Salem Road. They have asked for a continuance, so we will not be hearing that case tonight. So if anyone wants to leave at this point, or not, thank you. All right. The next item is four and five, which are PUDs. Before we get into that, there's a script I need to read, since this is a quasi judicial hearing, both items four and five. Bear with me here a minute. First, I'll outline the procedures the commission will follow in hearing and deciding the matter under the zoning resolution. Our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria of the zoning resolution. We do not want to hear opinions, just facts relating to the compliance with these standards and criteria. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application. The applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witness who testified before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case to the witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify one at a time after being recognized by the chair. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chair. If anyone in opposition is represented by an attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As stated previously, all persons wishing to testify whether for or against the application may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium after being recognized, speak into the microphone, and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to three minutes unless the commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new, non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, will all the persons who will give testimony in either case four or five this evening Raise your right hand and swear or affirm. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, we'd like for staff to, we're going to listen to the continuum of planned unit development PUD request, case one dash 2019. Property is located at 8260 Beauchamp Avenue. Staff?
Yes, and just for one clarification, Mr. Henson did not sit on the zoning commission last month to hear the case, however, he was in the audience and is familiar with the case and heard the case. So I just wanted to confirm that for the record. And you feel comfortable hearing the continuance?
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. So again, this was, this is a continuance of case one, 2019 PUD for Cincinnati Used Auto, which is located at 8260 Beauchamp Avenue. The applicant is Troy Siddique and Steve Schlagbaum on behalf of Ahmad and Haam Siddique, who are the property owners. Location begins at 8260 Beauchamp, and the zoning there is E Retail. The property is 1.6 acres, approximately 130 feet of frontage on Beauchamp Avenue, and there's a swell in the rear of the property. The current use is Cincinnati Used Auto, and the request is for an expansion of their parking lot in the rear to add additional parking for auto sales, auto storage. So we'll just go briefly through the presentation. If you were here last month, your statements that you stated last month carry over, so you don't need to repeat. We'll only take new information for this case. So, brief history, the property underwent a change of use in 2008, and since then, there have been various improvements to the property. 2009 and 2011, the parking lot was expanded. In 2016, the electronic message sign was added, and then in 2017, there was an application that was denied by the zoning commission. This is the site in question. So Beauchamp Avenue to the south to the bottom of the slide, this is the existing building and existing property. This is an aerial of the site in question surrounding property. To the east is Penn Station, to the west is House Pets for House Pets, and then to the north are single-family uses to the north. This was an updated site plan, so several, the parking, again, is the new parking is shaded on the site plan. There is a request for a five-foot setback along the northern property line in this area, the parking area where 10 feet is required. The applicant also submitted an updated landscaping plan. This is the landscaping detail along Beauchamp Avenue, and then this is an updated landscaping plan for the rear of the property. So the case was continued last month with the following request, was an updated lighting plan to be in compliance with the zoning resolution, an updated landscaping plan to address concerns from residents to the north of screening of the property to the north, and then also additional landscaping around the freestanding sign on Beauchamp Avenue. In addition, the zoning commission requested information about the sign, more detail about the height and the square footage of the sign, as well as detail of the pavement depth and the cross-section of the pavement for the new parking area. Forgetting one thing. I don't have that down. I believe those were the items. So the applicant submitted this revised landscaping plan. Additional landscaping has been added along the fence line in the northwest portion of the property. In addition, landscaping has been added along this section of the property. The detail is on the plan itself. Landscaping was added around the sign. A lighting plan was submitted that is compliant with zoning regulations. And then the pavement detail was also submitted in your plan. We don't have that actually on the slide. So just a review of this site photos, looking in both directions on Beauchamp Avenue. This is looking toward the front of the existing building. There is a billboard on the property. This is looking toward Beauchamp Avenue, looking toward the south from the rear of the property. This is looking toward the north of the area that is proposed to be paved for the addition of the parking area. So I won't go through all of the findings again. We went through that at the last meeting. But again, the revised lighting plan is compliant. The applicant is still requesting for a five-foot setback for the parking lot. The sign is compliant, 15 feet tall, which is a compliant sign in the E Retail zoning district. The freestanding sign, the square footage is 65.2. We would round that to 65, so technically it is compliant with the area. So these are just items that we covered last month. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you. Start with Commissioner Boone?
I have none.
I have none.
Commissioner Henson?
I have none.
Commissioner McBride?
Paul, was the, were you able to talk to the fire department about this?
Yes, thank you for the reminder. We did ask the fire department if there were any existing or previous violations to the fire code, and this would consist of mainly the parking area, having a fire apparatus be able to get into the parking area and around the building. And they confirmed that, yes, there were violations, and they did an inspection today, and they confirmed that there still are violations, and gave them to March to correct the violations.
March 1st?
No, March the 25th, I believe.
I just, I had in my notes something about bumper blocks. Was that something we didn't require or we asked for on the front of the lot?
I think we can have the applicant discuss the detail. I believe a curb is proposed.
Okay. Yep, back a couple. Back to the picture.
Oh, you want the picture?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right there. Okay. Is the applicant here? Please come forward, state your name, address, and affiliation.
Steve Schlagbaum, 7335 Shawnee Run Road, Cincinnati, Ohio 45243. I'm working on behalf of SADACs and Cincinnati Used Auto, basically just to facilitate the process of submitting the revised application continuation from what they had done last year.
Anything new you want to present, or you agree with everything of the staff?
Basically, what we had revised and resubmitted addressed all the issues. I feel addressed all the issues that were brought to the attention at last month's meeting, adding in the requested landscaping, adding in the landscaping around the base of the parking, the existing monument sign, pole sign. There was a question regarding the requirement for the parking blocks. If we do not have a curb, we are willing to put parking blocks on the stalls to make sure that the vehicles are not pulled onto any of the grass areas. The majority of the rear of the space already has curbs on existing islands and what have you. And likewise, the rear of the parking lot, which is all going to be poured concrete, would end up having an integral curb, so that curb actually benefits from the standpoint of not allowing water flow to flow off of the curb. It's being contained, so it goes, it's directed into the catch basins. One of the reasons why we, again, we were requesting to expand that five feet to encompass the catch basin, just makes it a little bit easier. But if there are areas up at the front of the parking lot for the new landscape areas, if we need parking blocks, we'll put in parking blocks as requested. That's not a problem.
Okay. This time, we'll open it up to Commissioner Boone. Any questions for the applicant?
No.
Just come down the line.
I have one for you. I looked at the landscaping plan, noted that, yes, you kept it at the five feet instead of the 10. The columnar white pine, I appreciate them. I did look into them to see, because I've always known white pine to be really fast-growing, so I wanted to make sure I was understanding the correct tree. From what I understand, they're going to get eight to 10 feet wide in a very short period of time. When you have a setback that's only five feet, I'm not sure where those trees are going. You've got a fence that's there that...
I'm going to defer to my landscape architect for any details regarding plant material.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Tammy Schlagbaum, 7335 Shawnee Run Road, Cincinnati, Ohio 45243. I'm a landscape architect. I prepared the plans. What I looked at doing was accommodating with the columnar white pines. I wanted to sit them in a spacing of about five feet to each other so that, yeah, white pines are a little bit thinner. I wanted the branches to interlock to provide that kind of screening. Where the white pines are is, will provide a buffer, but also where the fence line starts to angle in, away from that back property line, is where there is, in my opinion, a lot more visibility from the residents in the rear and on the side from Wood Glen and Yellow Glen. So in those locations, we also then, where I had some wire spaces, I also went ahead and put in some green giant arborvitae, which are a really excellent plant. In regards to your question regarding the spacing, there is enough room for the trees to, the root systems to grow. I am not overly concerned about the branching below the fencing in that particular situation. The branching above the fencing is what we'd be concerned about in regards to the evergreens. So if there's some growth and some trimming that needs to happen on the SADACs property, that won't affect the visibility of anything on the residential property behind.
How low, actually, do these branches come? Because the pictures that we saw from the residents last week, or last month, sorry, there is quite a bit of space between where the erosion has occurred and the bottom of the fence, but in through there, they could actually see cars.
The plant material is all on the SADAC side of the property.
Right.
So, and the fence goes all the way, the existing fence that's there, the fence goes all the way down to the existing grade. You can see the back hill. I walked the back side of the fence carefully last weekend, just to confirm, you know, what the area was back there. So anything that's going above the fence is, to answer your immediate question, was on white pines, the branching will start basically at the bottom. With any type of deciduous tree, it's going to be how high it's actually headed, which in that particular situation, they're going to be headed three to five feet. By heading is reference to finished grade to the first lower branches.
Okay, thank you.
So the intent would be, everything would be staying. I also, I don't, I wouldn't mind if you all would prefer to see all evergreens in there, but I did want to go with the fact of putting in columnar deciduous trees, because they will actually grow a little bit faster than the white pines. And I have to admit, when I first did the site, it was summertime, so everything was, oops, everything was leafed out, and when I went back out there and was looking at it this weekend, I went, got it. You know, this needs to be, this needs to be addressed. So that's the reason I also put a mix of different types of plants in there, so that in case something happened to have a decline or didn't grow as well, we've got other plant material where the interlocking branches are going to help add that screening that we need.
Okay, thank you.
Also, on a comment, on the plans that were resubmitted, there are parking blocks identified in the front to protect the plant material in the front. So those were actually added. Also, because we expanded the landscape bed around the base of the sign, there also, instead of a striped walkway, which was on the original set of plans, there's actually a section of concrete walk that will be built through the landscape bed to get that pedestrian connection that needs to occur per the code.
Anything else? Commissioner Henson?
I don't have any further questions.
Commissioner McBride?
Thank you. Tammy, maybe you could just stay up for just a second, if you wouldn't mind. Would that plant material do better along the rear property line if it was in a 10-foot bed than the five-foot bed?
The root, the area for the roots to grow is going to be planted well enough, or it's going to be, its soil's not like we're going into any type of heavy space. Any type of plant material, if you plant it in a park compared to you plant it on a street in a tree lawn, any plant material will have a tendency to grow more efficiently if there's more green space.
Okay. And then I noticed that the, like, for example, the white pines, I think, are proposed at five feet. The fence is six feet. You're not even going to see them at the beginning, right?
I went ahead and put them in per what the size of the code. We could always increase the size of that.
Okay. I think that was all I had.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, does anyone else want to speak in support of the applicant? Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the applicant? Going, going? Okay.
I have a question.
I'm sorry. Please come forward, state your name, address, any affiliation.
My name is Kirk Dirchols. My address is 1226 US Highway 50, Milford, Ohio. I'm vice president of construction with Penn Station Restaurants, neighboring property next door at 8270 Beauchamp Avenue, representing the owner, Mr. Jeff Ostrafeld. This photograph represents a concern we have with the front landscape plan at the street. There was a tree, thank you neighbors, that was existing in this photograph that was taken, whenever this photograph was taken, that has recently been removed. We were glad to see that, because it's obvious that the line of sight traveling from west to east was almost alleviated, the line of sight of our sign was almost alleviated by the tree. The new plan that I was privy to, or got in my possession this last Thursday afternoon, represents two trees that are indicated to be planted very near where that tree was removed, and the maturation height is indicated as being 15 feet high. I also pulled them up online, and there's a concern, because what I'd found online said these particular trees in this region of the country could grow to be 20 feet high. So we're concerned, sir, based on the placement of those trees, that we would be back to square one with where we started with this pine tree. So it's not necessarily in opposition of the overall plan. It's concern about the landscape plan. We would ask that the board would consider a lower growing tree, something that was lower in height or dimension, so that there wasn't the possibility of blocking our sign.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in opposition? Okay, at this time?
Just one, Ms. McBride asked regarding the fire department. It was March the 27th, not the 25th.
March the 27th?
March the 27th.
And they were out there, when, say, today or yesterday?
Today.
Today. Okay. This time, we'll close the public hearing and discussion among the commissioners. Commissioner McBride?
Yeah, I guess, first of all, I'm a little bit confused, because the landscape plan I'm looking at has marked those two trees as existing. I don't see...
Those probably should be withdrawn from plans when? When the plan was drawn.
Please come forward.
When the plan was generated, the tree still existed. Per Paul's request from, I believe, Penn Station and/or someone else, we've actually had the tree removed since then. So that's why the plan itself was never updated. I mean, that was post-resubmittal for this application.
So to cut to the chase, does the new plan include replacement of the trees, or...
Not that pine tree, no. The pine tree is gone. Everything else that we have on the landscape plan is per code.
So all the trees in that new plan are in the back of the property along the fence line, nothing in the front?
No, sir.
Okay.
If I may?
Yeah.
Code requires street trees. The streetscape buffer requires street trees. Two trees are required for the frontage that we have. Two trees are proposed in that streetscape.
Okay.
On the east side of the planter, opposite where the sign's at.
So could you relocate them somewhere else on the streetscape that would provide better visibility for the Penn Station sign?
The only recommendation I would suggest, if it would be acceptable, we could put them basically on the east property side, back from the Penn Station sign to the face of the building?
Where, closer to where one of those existing trees was.
And actually, one of those trees was actually a weed tree with a whole lot of honeysuckle. So the white pine was cut down, and the weed tree and honeysuckle were trimmed down as well.
Okay.
Do you have a recommendation for a replacement tree?
I would move that up too.
Okay.
Mr. Schlagbaum.
Thank you. And now open it up. Commissioner Boone? Any comments?
I have no comments.
Commissioner DiBaggio?
I appreciate all the re-landscaping work. I mean, it's definitely an improvement. I'm still hesitant about allowing the rezone, not the change of setback in the back to five feet. I think it would just personally feel as though the residents would be better served by a 10-foot setback, which is code.
Commissioner Henson?
No.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes, I tend to agree with my fellow commissioner. I think that the plant material would do better in the 10 feet than in the five feet, and it would allow for additional growth of that plant material, as well as maintaining a setback between a parking area, vehicle storage area, and a single-family residential. But I do have to say that I have some concerns, this business continues to violate not only our zoning laws, but also our fire code. And knowing that it's coming back before the commission, one might think that they might bring it into conformance. So I have some real concerns about the whole issue.
Okay. Thank you. I am in agreement on the fire code violations. It was disappointing. So at this time, I will entertain a motion from anyone with a case to approve.
Maybe a little bit more discussion?
Absolutely.
That's all right. You know, I understand that they would like to use the property, but as I said, I do have some real concerns about their ability to adhere to both the zoning laws and the fire code. I was prepared to make a motion, but I am concerned hearing the comments from the fire department. Do you all think it would be appropriate to give them to another meeting to try to come into compliance?
If they were given till March 27th, the next meeting is prior to that, but I guess we could ask?
We could ask the fire department to...
Even though they have till the 27th, do we get a continuance to the March?
The April meeting would be April 27th.
But what about the March, if they were able to? If the fire department was able to get there before?
They give the applicant that length of time to come into compliance.
Okay.
So they can generally check the time, that helping time.
Okay. Well, if the calendar being what it is, then...
The applicant can bring it in to compliance sooner.
Is the applicant here? Are you just representing the applicant? Okay. You come forward.
Hi, I'm Ahmad Siddique.
So you understand our ongoing concern?
Yep.
And the fire department and the access and...
Yep.
Okay. It is ongoing with the five-foot and the 10-foot, so is there anything you want to offer to speak to, how you can get in compliance?
I don't know, but Steve, he know more than me about whatever he did it, but he's used car lot. I need every inch extra for more car, more business. So, but I agree with the township, with the green space, whatever he wanted, the light, whatever he wanted, but...
Okay.
I need, as soon as I got parking spot, so more car for me, that's the business.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thoughts? Comments? A motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we continue case one dash 2019 PUD for 8260 Beauchamp Avenue until our March meeting. And Paul, I would also ask, as a part of that motion, that you touch base with the fire department, and also have one of the zoning inspectors go out and look at the property prior to that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
The March meeting date would be March 20...
The March meeting date would be March twenty-fifth.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Are you leaving the case open for additional public comment, or are you closing the case just with additional, requesting additional information?
I, I would leave it open for public comment.
Leave it open, okay.
Yeah, we didn't address all the other?
Okay, thank you.
Please take a roll.
Mr. Boone?
Aye.
Ms. DiBaggio?
Aye.
Mr. Henson?
Aye.
Ms. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will begin the discussion for the planned unit development PUD request, case three dash two thousand nineteen. Property is located at fifty-five thirty-one Clough Pike, fifty-four thirty-one Clough Pike and twenty-six ninety-one Elston Road. Staff, can you give your report?
The applicant is Nicholas Selhorst with Choice One Engineering, who is representing homes by Coach, Robert Gerwin and Varley LLC, or, Robert Gerlin, who's the applicant. Varley LLC, Patricia L. Murray Trustee and Susan R. Beckman Trustee, they are the property owners. Again, the location is at fifty-five thirty-one and fifty-five forty-one Clough Pike. There are multiple parcels involved, parcel sixty-one and twenty-eight, uh, book five hundred, page four forty, and then page four thirty and parcel thirty-two. There are two different zoning classifications and potential, uh, third, A residence for the majority of the property, C residence for a small portion, and then H, uh, riverfront in the, in the floodplain area near the Skytop Pavilion. The request is to approve a planned unit development application to allow for sixty-three single-family homes on thirty-one point seventy-one acres. Um, eleven, approximately eleven point nine-three acres developed and seventeen point zero-three acres of open space. Again, the total size of the property is thirty-one acres, thirty-one point seventy-one acres. There's approximately seven hundred twenty feet of frontage on Clough Pike. The topography, there are steep slopes, um, that slope from Clough Pike and slope from the south into the creek. Um, there is a floodplain on the property as well as floodway for Clough Creek. The existing use, uh, the one parcel is vacant and the second parcel does have one single-family residence. So just a quick summary of the proposals, sixty-three single-family lots are proposed, eleven point nine-three acres developed, seventeen point zero-three acres open space. The minimum lot size proposed is four thousand seven hundred fifty square feet. Front yards are proposed at twenty feet, side yards at five feet, and rear yard setbacks of twenty feet. Minimum lot width of fifty feet. This, um, is a residential PUD and a subdivision, so pending zoning approval, the next step would be a subdivision review by Hamilton County Regional Planning, as well as all the other various agencies revolved, involved with development. So, um, with Clough Creek involved, the Army Corps of Engineer, Hamilton County Stormwater, uh, Hamilton County Engineers Office with Clough Pike, uh, the primary frontage. So, a little bit of history, on January the third of this year, there was an open house meeting held with residents in the immediate vicinity. The concerns that were raised were traffic curb placement of the drive, of the public road coming on Clough Pike, um, stormwater, plan compliance with the township adopted plans, fire and EMS access, and sidewalk and pedestrian accessibility. This is the site in question. Clough Pike is to the north of the property. The property is outlined in red, uh, including this piece here. This is the piece that's zone C, single-family. There is a small portion through here, and I'll show you the zoning map in just a second, that's zoned H. The majority of the property is zoned A, single-family. And, and just a, um, this is the city of Cincinnati-Anderson Township border. So Keystone Drive, this is within the city of Cincinnati. It stubs into this property. This piece of property over here is Anderson Township. This is the border for Anderson Township here. This is an aerial view of the site in question. Again, this is the creek here. The property is, is primarily wooded. The house, um, in question, there is one house up here. I think that outline is incorrect. That's the house up there. So this is the proposed layout of the site. The access would, they're proposing a single point of access off of Clough Pike. The roads would be public. All of this would be public. There is a bridge proposed over the creek and then two, two other cul-de-sacs. Um, there is a proposed access to the existing home that would, that would, a, a separate drive that would come down to the, um, cul-de-sac. These lots here, up until lot, um, twelve would be double-frontage lots. They would have frontage on both the new street and on Clough Pike. However, clarification is needed from the applicant. There is a ten-foot streetscape buffer proposed in this area, whether that would be a separate parcel or if that would be, um, included in the parcels with the homes. If, if the homes are on these parcels, they are considered double-frontage lots. If it is a separate parcel by the HOA, then they would not be double-frontage lots. Um, in the staff report, we did note that these were also double-frontage, and that is not correct. There is, um, there is additional property between these proposed lots and Clough Pike. This is just a color rendering of the property. You can, on, the floodplain, it runs along the portion of the, the rear of these lots here. There are three detention basins that are proposed, and again, a buffer along these, uh, lots here. This is just a Google street view of Clough Pike in the immediate vicinity. I'm sorry, this was pr- provided by Choice One, um, the engineer, a rendering of the view of the homes as they would back up to Clough Pike with the berm in place. These are sample elevations of the homes that are proposed. This was a site distance study conducted by their engineer with the proposed roadway, um, site distance in both directions. This would be the proposed road onto Clough Pike. The, the first slide was looking generally in the east. The second is looking in the west toward thirty-two. These are some of the site photos. We went in off of Keystone, um, off of the cul-de-sac there and took photos looking. So the majority of our photos are from the Keystone side of the creek. So, and these are somewhat in order, uh, from when we took them, coming in off of the roadway going down toward the creek. Just to give you an idea of pictures of the creek. These were taken on the fourteenth. These are Google street views of, um, Clough Pike in the vicinity of where the road is proposed. The road would actually be proposed down in this area here. There would be homes about in this vicinity here. The, uh, existing home is just off of the slide. Looking in the other direction. So staff findings, the purpose of a PUD, and I won't read the entire thing, but this is taken out of Article Four in the Township's zoning resolution, but the purpose of a PUD overlay is to encourage the efficient use of land and resources, promoting greater efficiency in public and utility services, orderly improvement of property in accordance with community plans, and to convert, encourage innovation in the planning and building of all types of development without detriment to neighboring properties. So what a PUD is, it is an overlay zone. There's a PUD overlay over all the commercial areas, which is based off of impervious surface in the commercial areas. In the residential zoning districts, a PUD allows for a relaxation of the area of lots and setbacks in lieu of open space. What a PUD does not allow is for density that is greater than what the normals, what the underlying zoning district would allow. So the A zoning district allows for the minimum lot size of twenty thousand square foot, so just shy of a half an acre lot. And then there is a C zoning, a small portion of this property, which allows for a, uh, home to be built on six thousand square feet. And then the H zoning district, which allows for a home to be built on five thousand, or, I'm sorry, twenty thousand square feet as well. So, um, what a PUD allows for is for the relaxation of the area, especially in light of physical features on a property that may make one area of the property more developable in the, in the other, and allows for the homes to be clustered in lieu of keeping open space. So that is what this application is, is proposing. With a PUD, there are standards in our zoning resolution in Article Four that we'll review. We're also looking at, um, zoning compliance as well as the applicable plans that are adopted in the township that are applicable for this particular area. So zoning resolution compliance, um, the density was proposed at one point nine-nine units per acre, which is consistent with the density in that zoning district. Uh, we did list the area and this, this, um, setbacks that are proposed. Again, which we've already gone over, uh, front yard of twenty, side of five, rear twenty, and the minimum lot width of fifty. These are the areas, um, staff feels that are applicable in the Anderson Township Comprehensive Plan, that we feel that the proposal is consistent. Um, the people and housing chapter, the land use and development. Uh, we feel that this is consistent in providing a housing type that is needed in the township. And this is according to the, the twenty sixteen update, our comprehensive plan update. These are some of the areas, uh, that the development, uh, thinks needs to be addressed, and I can go back to the site plan if it would make more sense, but as far as land use and development access is concerned. Sorry to go back, but? The property is not showing connectivity to other properties. The only act, uh, connectivity here is an access easement for the drive for the existing home. So staff is of the opinion that this cul-de-sac should be extended at least to the property line to allow for future development, should that occur. Same, uh, for this area on the Clough side of the creek. If this property were to develop, staff feels that an easement would, should be necessary to allow for any development to tie into the street instead of another curb cut on Clough Pike. Um, same as back in this vicinity, uh, an easement to this property, should that property ever develop in the future. And then also, we'll talk about emergency access, but staff is of the opinion, and Fire and EMS are of the opinion that a secondary emergency access at a minimum is necessary for this development. And where that is provided, we've posed the question to the, uh, developer, whether that's out to Elston or out to Keystone, um, or over to the Skytop Shopping Center. Staff is of the opinion EMS, uh, is requesting a secondary at a minimum emergency access. So, sorry if I'm making you all sick by going through the slides. The natural and environmental resources, so the area is steep, obviously has some topography. Um, it's, it's steep on both sides from Clough Pike and from the south going toward the creek. There's a floodplain. There's also a floodway of the creek. So, the applicant's only proposing to develop half of the property, which is consistent with the natural and environmental resources element in preserving those areas. At the same time, though, not enough information, staff doesn't feel is provided. Um, a grading plan was not provided, so it's too difficult to determine how much of the property would actually be disturbed and if it would be consistent with the natural and environmental resources. Um, transportation element of the comprehensive plan, be a community with a model sidewalk and bike trail system. The proposed plan did not show sidewalk connectivity or sidewalks in general. The applicant has stated they intend to put sidewalks on the interior of the, of the development, but it wasn't shown on their plan. A traffic impact study, there was a letter received by Hamilton County Engineers Office who did review this, and they submitted their standard comments that additional right-of-way would be required to be dedicated, and a traffic impact study would be required and approved through them. A, another, uh, element of the comprehensive plan is that, um, consistency with, um, surrounding development. And so a ten-foot wide berm is shown along Clough. However, it is unclear how this, there was an image shown, um, a, a view that, that shows the backs of the homes and their view along Clough Pike, but I think more information is needed at what particular elevation these houses would sit compared to the elevation of Clough Pike, uh, and what the landscaping, uh, would actually be. And then the natural environmental, uh, elements, again, we feel that a grading plan is necessary. We did talk about a secondary access, um, for fire and EMS, and then also the, um, Anderson Trails Plan. So a sidewalk would be required on both sides of all new streets as well as a sidewalk along the frontage on Clough. Our trails plan does identify a sidewalk from Turpin High School and, or, not Turpin, Turpin Hills Swim Club. So there is a potential for that connectivity, for this development to tie into the Turpin Hill Swim Club and along. So sidewalks have not necessarily been discussed with the applicant, whether they would prefer to, or sidewalk on both sides of the road on the interior, or sidewalk on one side of the road. If that was the case, uh, there is the potential to use that, those funds for off-site sidewalk improvements. So our notes, uh, we found that the following is consistent with the PUD. The density is consistent with the A and the C zoning districts. It's consistent with some of the goals of the comprehensive plan. Single-family use is compatible, um, with the exception of some of those lots on Clough Pike, not, one through twelve that are double-frontage and how they relate to property across the street. And then number four, the project enables adequate protection of surrounding property, uh, if some, if number three is addressed. These are the items we didn't feel that were consistent with the PUD requirement. The connection, or at least, uh, secondary connection, emergency access for Fire and EMS. Also connections to surrounding properties, should those properties develop in the future. And then the buffering, again, not enough information, uh, was provided. In addition, the timeframe was not provided. We do, we talked about sidewalks. And again, development consistent with surrounding area and how that's done. So I'll be happy to answer. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Start with Commissioner Boone?
Couple questions. You said that the, um, timeframe wasn't provided. Do we have a best guess? Do we have any?
We don't.
No, okay. As far as the, uh, secondary entrance goes, could, I guess, the entrance altogether, could the entrance be from Elston or Keystone or the shopping center, the main entrance, and eliminate the Clough Pike entrance?
We feel that two, at, at least a main entrance, they, they don't have property out to Elston, to Beechmont currently. Their property is on Clough Pike, so they don't have, um, our fire and EMS is recommending a secondary emergency access at a minimum. So I think those are questions opposed to the applicant, but I don't think they have secured property out to Beechmont. And then Elston is a, a private road.
It's not a township, or?
It's not. It's a private road.
Anything else for staff?
That's it for now.
Commissioner DiBaggio?
Um, just so that I'm clear. Does this actually attach to Elston at all, that those property owners could be addressed to see if they would be willing to give access for either the community or for the EMS traffic?
There is, I believe, one to two parcels that separate this development from physical connection to the roadway.
Okay. Alright, that's it for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Henson?
Paul, do we typically include non-developable portions of a site in our density calculations?
Yes, we include everything except for the right-of-way.
Okay.
So the, um, it's written in our zoning resolution, net density versus gross. So, um, we, because we don't know that it's not developable. The floodplain can be filled, the hillsides can be graded. You know, the property can be modified. So in our calculations, we use the total area of the property. So, in our calculations, we use the total area of the property. Um, and what is excluded would be right-of-way for the public infrastructure.
Anything else? Commissioner McBride?
Yeah, I guess, um, Paul, the, was the fire department looking then at Keystone, do you think, since that is, I mean, obviously the city of Cincinnati had it intent when they stubbed the street?
So I don't think they're really given a recommendation that they, they feel a secondary one is needed. The grade comes in better at Elston versus Keystone. But again, I think, you know, posing that back to the applicant to provide one.
When you, uh, Paul, when you talk about the setback on the front, if I look at the picture, wouldn't that push the entire development back toward the creek?
It could, yes.
Probably a question for the applicant, but it's if we maintain the 50-foot distance. Okay. Second chance, staff for questions? Okay. This time, will the applicant, uh, come forward? Please state your name, address, affiliation.
Uh, Robert Gerwin, and I own Homes by Coach and, uh, here in Cincinnati, Ohio.
And we may, there may be some others that weren't swearing either. Somebody wants to swear everyone.
Anyone else coming late that will be, coming up to speak in favor or opposition?
Didn't swear in.
Uh, Gary, is there a condensed swearing in for something later that I hear through the?
Just, do you swear?
Bear with me. You missed the excitement.
Sorry.
Two pages. Um, if you're gonna give testimony, CD?
Just say, "Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth?"
Uh, please, your heart stand, raise your right hand. Swearing affirmed, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, is all you got?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, my name is Robert Gerwin and I own Homes by Coach. And, uh, uh, we develop ranch-style condominium communities. Uh, first one was up in Milford called The Villas at Tartan Glen. Uh, we have one, we finished in Lawrence Park called Villas at Sugar Glen. We have a community in Amelia called The Villas at Water for Glen. And they're all ranch-style, uh, communities targeting empty nester retirees. Uh, we also have a, a development in, uh, Tartan Meadows in Miami Township also. Uh, in my community in, um, Amelia, uh, we've, we've sold, uh, 62 units now and half of them come from Anderson Township. Cause it's a, it's a ranch-style, no stairs, uh, the community's maintained by the Homeowners Association and, and, um, I feel this to be a great place for this, uh, this type of product here in Anderson Township. Um, so the community, the, the proposed community is designed to have a homeowner's association that manages all the common areas and the lots and, and the grass and landscaping and the land, and the, and the plants and shrubs. Uh, so it, uh, the first, uh, 30 units on the north side of the creek there, um, will be ranch-style, um, on slab and price point will start about $350,000. Square footage will be about, um, you know, 1,900 square feet. Um, most of our communities do not have, uh, the buyers don't typically want it upstairs, but you know, there may be an upstairs which would add to the square footage. Uh, the next section of homes there, you know, lots 31 to 41 would have basements and walkout basements. The price point would be around $450,000. And then the, the last lots, 42 through 63 are larger lots, uh, wider lots. So they'd be larger homes with basements and walkouts and probably around $500,000 to $600,000. But, uh, again, it'd be HOA managed. Uh, we originally wanted to do private streets, uh, but the county, uh, had said that because the, it's more than, I think it's five lots, Paul. If you're over five lots, it's gotta be public streets. So my communities in Claremont County are, are private streets. So, uh, but this, so this would be public streets. What questions might you have?
Start down at my far left. Commissioner Moon.
I'll go back to my timeframe question. Uh, can you give us ballpark on what we'd be looking at as far as getting this thing off the ground?
Um, well, it, it would depend on, um, obviously having the, the proposed project approved, uh, and then going through engineering. Uh, I did, uh, part of the, in the contract with the, the property owners would be to develop the north side of the creek and then the south side of the creek. Um, so it, it, you know, conceivably, it could be the fall, um, but if weather doesn't present, it might be next spring.
And, uh, any thoughts?
The finish, would it be in phases, one phases, two phases, three phases?
Oh, uh, yeah, it, it, it would be two phases, the north side and the south side. Um, so it'd be two phases and it'd probably take, uh, uh, two to three years to complete the project.
Okay, thank you. That's all right. So as I read through the materials, it seems like there might be a general feeling that an age restriction would reduce tra, some traffic concerns. And it sounds as though you designed these, uh, I believe in your description, you said it was for, uh, folks that would, uh, tend to be elderly. So is this, would you consider an age restriction?
Uh, my, my community in Indiana actually has an age restriction upon it, but it was done after the fact. The HOA took over and they decided to place an age restriction upon it. Um, because the lots are smaller, because there's an HOA involved, you know, there's not, there's any play, play yards, there's no fields. It, it, you know, my communities, you know, do not have families. It's just, they don't lend themselves to families because the product that's being built doesn't, doesn't accommodate families. So, I can't say that nobody's gonna purchase a home that has a family, but, uh, you know, it's targeted to have, uh, empty nesters living within the community. So again, the HOA fees, uh, really tend themselves to, to empty nesters who can then lock and leave their home. In other words, they can lock it and go to Florida and the homeowner's association maintains the home or the exterior of the home. So, um, but, you know, so I, I, one of my communities does have it, uh, but I, I didn't implement it, but.
And, and that community, is it 55?
It is 55.
And as far as the access, would you consider, um, maybe the two access points coming in off of Keystone and, and Elston as opposed to Clough Pike?
Uh, you know, I, I, I have not considered it, um, mainly because, uh, you know, if I could, I can share with you, uh, the pictures of Elston Road. You know, it's, it's, it's not. You know, the, Elston Road is, is, you know, there's no drainage, there's no curbs. It's, it's, the, the asphalt's literally falling down the hillside. It's not wide enough, as you can see, to get two cars go by at once. Uh, the, the homes on the, you know, it's just not a, it's not a, it's, I, you wouldn't wanna invest a bunch of money to develop a nice community and have nice people live there and have an entrance like that. So, um, um, but, so I have not considered the, the, the other sides.
That's all I have right now. Okay, next.
Has a geotech study been performed yet?
Uh, no ma'am.
So, we have, um, no idea in terms of what, what might be needed, because I'm looking at this plan and I'm looking at the topographical map. And what I'm seeing is that lots one through 12, which you just described as a slab-based ranch, is going to be on a heck of a hill, if I can put it that way. Unless you do a whole lot of grading, but then there's still gonna be something that's gotta bring you up to Clough. Have you looked into doing or are you considering doing any kind of retention along Clough?
There, there would be. And the lots, um, it's worth noting that speaking of lots one through 12, the, uh, for example, the elevation of Clough Pike at behind lot one is, let's see here, I got it. Is 534 feet. And we're proposing the, the pad where the house for lot one would be at 524. So there'd be a 10-foot drop. So, from a, that hillside actually provides a natural buffer from Clough to the community. And I think that's an important feature. And as it works west, the road rises, we've all been on Clough Pike, the road rises. So it, it, you end up, as you get to, um, lot 12, you know, there's a 25-foot drop from the top of the, uh, Clough Pike to where the, the building pad would be. So, um, you know, the first six houses, you'd see the top of the roof, but as you get farther west, you, you won't see the top of the houses. So it provides a natural buffer there. Uh, but, so there'll be grading behind that as it comes down the hill. We'll be grading that out to build the pads.
Okay, um, I appreciate that. What I'm thinking more of is that with Clough Pike being there, trucks go on it, et cetera, how do we know that that's not gonna start causing problems? And your geotech will tell you that to an extent. However, I, I'm just wanting to know, have you given any consideration to putting any kind of retention wall behind those units to help stabilize?
Our, our preliminary discussion of that would be the, the, the lots to the far to the west would need some retention, retaining walls behind it. The first five or six, it's, it's more of a mild grade down to it, but as you get farther west, there would be a, a need for retaining walls. I have not yet done enough, um, research on to tell how high the walls would be, but there would be some retaining walls.
Okay. Um, might that also include peering of some of those houses, but they wouldn't need that, would they?
No, we'll be do, do, uh, compaction, compacted pads and the slab will be built on the pads. There won't be any peering.
Okay. Um, the con-span structure, the bridge. Uh, question as to, that's a, if my, if I'm understanding properly, that's almost a pre-formed thing that is brought in.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it, how wide will that arch? I'm sure I'm using the wrong terms, but the arch that is underneath, will the water directly in that, um, floodway be hitting the sides of that or will it all be going under it?
It will all be above it. There'll be, uh, concrete piers that'll be built up on each side of the creek to bring the con-span, so they'll be on top of the piers, so the water will never hit the, uh, the con-span, uh, steel girders.
Okay, that's at the top though, correct?
Uh, well, the bottom too.
At the bottom too.
Yes, so the, the, the concrete piers will be built up high enough to be totally out of the, the, the floodplain. And then the, 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 uh, the spans go across from there.
So that should not slow down the water?
No, it won't.
Okay. Um, I think you answered the question that it's a, it's a condo community. Is it your intention that the homeowners themselves would be responsible for all the exterior maintenance, et cetera?
Are you talking about the home themselves?
The home themselves, yes.
Uh, three of my communities, that is, the, the exterior of the homes are maintained by the homeowner's association as part of the HOA fees. So the roof and the siding, the shutters is maintained by the HOA. But in this case, my plan on, because we'll be conveying the lots, that there'll be an easement to the HOA to be able to manage cutting the grass and landscaping, but the home will themselves, the homeowner themselves will make, will take care of their home.
Okay.
So to answer your question now.
Okay. Um, just a question for you. Would you be willing to look at moving lots one through, I'm just gonna say 12, give them a 50-foot setback between the, between the rear of that house or the rear of that property and Clough Pike to allow for some additional frontage and buffering there? And I know that will affect ones 22 through 30, which frankly are sitting in the 100-year floodplain. Would you be willing to do, I'm not sure how you can move those forward anymore into that floodplain than they already are, but would you be willing to look at that?
Uh, you know, we, we, we've, uh, because of this 30-inch sanitary sewer, there really is no room to move to the south. Um, and I, we, we feel that the, the natural buffer that's afforded from the Clough Pike being above provides enough. Um, you know, but i- if, if that were the case, then we, we would have to make an adjustment and we may lose some lots if we did that, so.
Sidewalks in the subdivision in Clough, and if I'm understanding properly, you said you'd be willing to address that, correct?
Yes, the roadways in there are, are 40 feet, so that, that we're planning on doing sidewalks. We're gonna do them on one side. We're also, we're gonna do sidewalks along the creek on both sides with perguloves, so the, the community can, you know, park, we're gonna put a little side, couple, uh, parking lots behind the lot 30 there, so people can walk their dog along the creek and, and walk and put a pergolo down there by the detention basin. It'll be, it'll be beautiful.
Okay. And if I'm understanding what has gone on, the house that is at, oh golly, I've lost which one it is. I think it's 54, 5531, 5431. That house that's currently up in that corner?
Yes, ma'am.
By Clough, that is going to remain there and you'll provide access to it, correct?
That's correct.
That parcel will be kinda parceled off?
Yes, ma'am. The, the family was having a tough time selling the home because of the, the danger of the driveway right on that curve there. So that's part of the deal is that they'd have an access easement to come down the access of the back of the cul-de-sac there.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Henson? I don't think I have too many additional questions. It was pretty comprehensive at this point. Um, I do wanna kinda convey my concerns about the sidewalks themselves. I know that you've said that they're gonna be included on one side of the interior drives. And I'm waiting, you know, hopefully to see those plans shortly. Did you also, um, address extending the sidewalks along Clough to make a connection to Summit Hills Swim Club?
I, I would like to comment on that, that, that we do have, I, I live at Skytop. Um, I've traveled Clough all the time. The sidewalks do come down to copper leaf and then to Turpin, but from Turpin farther down, literally on the south side, the, the roadway drops off. I mean, there, there isn't enough, you know, God-given land to build a sidewalk. So, and I think that stands to bear also on the top of this property there along Clough. I mean, it, it's a very, it's, it's a very, you know, it's not safe to be walking along there anyway. So, I, I would be open to having discussion about to do it, but I'm not sure there's, there's a place to do it frankly, so.
Um, a second question, uh, had to do, um, with the grading plan. There, no matter how you cut it, this property's gonna require a lot of grading and filling and moving of land and dirt. How soon do you think we can see that grading plan?
Evening, Nick Sahors with Choice One Engineering, 203 West Loveland Avenue, Loveland, Ohio. We can do a preliminary grading plan in the next month. That's, that's not the big deal. The final design of that grading, um, is something that the county reviews as part of their subdivision approval process. The county has a geotechnical engineer that reviews the slopes and things like that. So a preliminary grading plan could show heights of retaining walls and proposed slopes and those sorts of things and could easily be done in the next month.
And maybe this question is also for you too, but can you describe, uh, the mitigation uh, improvements that you include in a typical plan or development like this to prevent this dirt from spilling into the creek and onto neighboring properties during and after construction?
Typically, there's a geotechnical report done and that'll tell you the slopes that the soils can hold at, uh, so you don't grade it any steeper than that. You make sure they're stabilized and seeded so that there's vegetation, so that's not just a bunch of dirt falling down the hillside during construction. Uh, there's a stormwater pollution prevention plan to show where you need silt, uh, silt protection to keep mud and silt and that kinda stuff from going into the river. Uh, that's another part of the county approval process is we need to show how that's being done and it's up to them and the EPA to enforce that during construction, because I'm sure we've all seen it, it rains and the silt fence gets knocked over. Uh, so that needs to be maintained during construction too. But that's all part of the subdivision approval process on the construction drawings.
Um, I don't have any other questions about grading.
Okay, Commissioner McBride?
Thank you. Um, you might wanna stay up for just a second, please. Uh, so the, on the right-of-way dedication, the plan itself notes that a 50-foot right-of-way would be dedicated, but the note on the side says 40 feet?
Oh boy, where are we at here? So, the, the new streets will have 40-foot right-of-way width. So, the, what you're looking at as far as the new streets that we're proposing, that's right-of-way to right-of-way. That's not actually the width of the road itself and that's 40 feet. And what the county requires is part of their thoroughfare plan, because Clough Pike is a minor arterial, uh, they're dead, they're a minor arterial, they require a 50-foot half-right-of-way to be dedicated. So from the center of existing Clough, south 50 feet, wherever our property is, we have to dedicate 50 foot.
And you're indicating that you're going to be putting in turn lanes?
So the traffic impact study that the county will require has not been officially done yet, we just looked at the existing traffic counts on Clough from ODOT's data online, and we have a pretty good indication that if this were to be built with 63 homes, a left-turn lane into the development would almost definitely be required, and a right-turn lane into it would maybe be required.
So is there that existing right-of-way now?
I think the existing right-of-way, based on Cages, is about 75 feet, and it's a two-lane road, which is 24, 28 feet wide, depending on the shoulders. So if you added another lane, that's 36, so you still got, what is that, 20 feet on each side? So if turn lanes are required, they will be placed in the existing right-of-way, or the existing right-of-way and the frontage that we are going to have to dedicate.
On the site distance study you did, you had 500 feet to the east and 430 feet to the west?
Yes.
Did you use the posted speed limit to conduct that site distance study?
Correct.
Okay. You didn't do a radar study to determine the actual speed limit?
No, we did not.
Okay. And what is the status of the traffic impact analysis?
That's something we will do if and when the zoning were to be approved, that would need submitted to the county as part of the construction drawings. They wouldn't.
Okay. I think the rest of the questions may be that I have for you. With regards to the cross-access, do you have any problem granting cross-access to the properties to the east and to the west?
To the...
I'm sorry, north and south? I need a compass up here.
Well, it, so, the, I think it is east and west. Oh, do you mean north and south or east and west?
No, I'm sorry, east and west.
East and west. So, the one on the northwest there, the end of the cul-de-sac, you know, by Lot 17, that's fine. On the north side, on the east side of the property, there's actually a 14-foot watershed coming north to south, so I mean, that's fine, but nothing's going to, I don't anticipate anything happening there. So, and then on the, on the south side here, on the east, I did communicate three different times with the property owner there to the right, and he finally said, well, my neighbors called me, and they're interested in buying it and combining their parcel, because they don't want any neighbors next to them. So I have not had a discussion with him since. So, it, you know, I'd lose a lot if we were to do that, so I wouldn't be so inclined to do that if they're not going to have it available to develop.
So on Clough Pike, you were proposing a berm, did I understand? How does that work if the road is above the lots?
That's a great question, and I did want to talk about that. So, we have a 10-foot landscape buffer, but it, as it's designed, it's more below the top of Clough. So, you know, I don't know if there's a way where we can have the landscape buffer on top, but it would be in the right-of-way. So I, I'm not sure how you would want us to do that, but we would love to put, you know, a landscape buffer, but you're right, if it's down below, it would take 20 years for it to grow high enough to make any, any real impact. We would just have the natural buffer of the roadway being above the homes.
I think there's a misperception on that. Sorry, Robert.
No, it's fine.
So, we have to dedicate the 50-foot along Clough, and then that 10-foot landscape buffer is intended to be about the grade of Clough beyond the right-of-way, but has its own separate parcel, open space parcel. It's not an easement on the backs of those lots which are lower. So you'd have Clough, and then the dedicated right-of-way, which for now is just going to be grass, and then landscape mounding buffer, trees, and then it'll fall off and retaining walls as needed where the lots actually are.
But you can't get very much of a berm in 10 feet, can you?
It is difficult, and we made the berm as wide as we possibly could, given the limitations of that north edge of the creek with the sanitary and the floodplain.
How tall do you anticipate the berm to be?
How tall? 3 feet.
I'm sorry?
3 feet max.
3 feet?
It's just hard to...
But then you can put landscape.
Right, the true, the true buffer is the screening of the plants, not the actual mounding itself.
I guess maybe my last, oh, so, and I understand you haven't done any geotech on a site with this much topo?
No, ma'am.
And then I guess the last kind of minor question is, where are you going to put the gang mailboxes?
Well, I would anticipate them being on the east side of the entranceway, so when the residents come in, they would stop by and pick up their mail.
Well, if they're on the east side, they'd be facing, unless they have parking spaces for them, they would be going the wrong way on the street to use them, wouldn't they?
That's true. So I guess the, I'll have to put some thought into that, but I agree with you.
That's all I have, right?
Okay, thank you. My big question is, Commissioner's asked about the EMS or the secondary access, has any thought been going in? You're seeing to rule out Elston, what are your other options?
Well, I'll have to explore the options, though, there's a very comparable community that's being developed and now building over, called the Enclave at Woodruff, and they're doing a very empty nester product with very, they have two-and-a-half-foot side setbacks, and they have over 40 lots, and there is not a secondary access for, you know, so I'm not sure if that's a precedent or not, but they don't have, you know, a secondary entrance and egress there at that community.
Okay.
So, I, but I, you know, we just got the staff report on Friday, so I've not, I don't see Elston being an option since it's a private road, and I'm just not, I'll have to, I don't know what to say.
Okay. Any commissioners, come in.
An additional question for Paul.
Go ahead. Okay.
Paul, what's the maximum length of a cul-de-sac under the Hamilton County subdivision regs?
I don't have it memorized, I'm sorry.
You're disappointed.
I can research it while we have public comment and get that to you.
I mean, I guess the, your longest cul-de-sac here is 1,482 feet, does that comply with the Hamilton County subdivision regs? I'm sure your engineer knows.
Honestly, I don't know off the top of my head. We've had longer in other communities, so I didn't even look that up specifically.
When the subdivision review happens, they'll know.
Well... And I can find out, it's in the regs, I can look at it, I just don't have it memorized, I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in for the applicant? Please come forward. State your name, address, affiliation, if any.
My name is Gene Young, I live at 7906 Causeway Lane, Forest to Coal Stream. I lived about a mile from this development, proposed development, for 10 years, and I'm a friend of the family, personal friend, and I had been looking, helping them quietly look for two years for a capable developer to do something like you see in front of you. And during that process, I did speak with Rick Martin, Assistant Chief, regarding EMS access, and he said, told me that Keystone Drive would be adequate. Where I live, the Forest to Coal Stream, we have a temporary road, there are two posts with a long chain, and it has a, like a paverstone coming down a slight grade, and it comes down from the Coal Stream Community Apartments. That would be our access if our private road in the bridge would ever go out, so the fire department could get there. And it just seems that if that's what the staff requires, that would be an easy option, natural option. With this chain, the fire department can pop that in as soon as they pull up, and, but that would require an access through a couple of those lots coming off of Keystone. And also, the grade there is not quite as steep as it is in other parts of the area, you can, you can see that from the map in front of you.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Anyone else speak for the applicant?
Tim Curry, 6954 Patterson Road. I just, I've been familiar with this property for a lot of years, having grown up in Anderson, and actually played down there when I was a youth, et cetera. I apologize for my voice, I've just had surgery. And I was at the first open house, and there was nothing said at that point in time about the secondary entrance for the fire and EMS, and I'm, as a contractor, I live and die by a code book that's well over 1,000 pages thick that I have to have pretty well memorized, and I'm just wondering where all of this came from, that suddenly, like the one gentleman said, I've seen numerous other developments that are much larger than this without a secondary access. And so I'm just curious what, all of a sudden, the process that the fire department came up with that prompted that, do you have?
That'd be a question for the fire department.
Fire department, okay. It just seems like it's a fairly significant burden on the builder to give up a lot and driveway and everything else to do that, if it's just a, I really would like, you know, I would really like to live in a bigger home and a better community and drive a nicer car, but those are things that I like, not that I can't afford. And so if the fire department says I'd really like, as opposed to the code says, the building department says, the county commissioners say, whoever, then, you know, it's a different story. And so I just, I seem to think that it's personally is a burden that somebody's trying to place out there, because it's a personal preference as opposed to a codified requirement.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of the applicant? Okay, at this time, we'll now open it up to anyone speaking in opposition to the applicant. Please come forward, why don't we just go front to back to?
I'm an attorney, and I just have a point of order, I'd like to cross-examine the applicant as part of our presentation. I represent a handful of people that are sitting over here, and I'd like to save my sort of argument for the end, if that makes sense.
I believe you're able to do that, and there is not a three-minute time limit, is that correct? That's correct. Okay.
Right, and just for a brief opening remark, I submitted a letter today, we also just got the staff report on Friday, I want to be sure that my letter dated today, and Eric Russo, the executive director of the Hillside Trust, submitted a letter on January the 2nd, that both of those will be made part of this record?
They, we did receive them, but unfortunately, I can speak for myself, as commissioner, I did not have a chance to review it, because I got it when I came in tonight, so, as part of the record, yes, but I can't ask any questions of it, because I haven't reviewed it.
It can take as long as you want to read it, but as long as it's part of the record, I'm satisfied with that. And the, go ahead.
Mr. Koenig, is Mr. Russo going to testify?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Russo is here to testify, he'll be the first witness for us, I think, and then some neighbors want to speak.
Otherwise, we'd have a problem with accepting that into the, the letter into the record without cross-examining.
Okay. And the only other thing is, I just want to make an objection for the record to the three-minute time limits, I think they're unreasonable, I think that they're unfair, I think it's a denial of due process, and really fundamental fairness in this very complicated PUD request that seems woefully inadequate at this stage, and we need, we have too many questions at this point to really have it covered in three-minute increments. But if I could ask a couple...
I would just mention that three minutes is discretionary, if a commissioner has, would, you know, can ask, can allow them to go further than, longer than three minutes. So, we're not shutting down the mic and pulling you off at three minutes.
All right, so if any of you need more, three minutes, maybe you'll get it. Other than that, I have a couple cross-examination questions for the applicant, should I address them to the board, to the commission?
Speaking to the microphone, address them for the records that we have, and then we'll bring the applicant up to respond.
Well, my first question is, all of the surrounding uses to this property, most of which is zoned A residence, all of the surrounding uses are zoned A residence, aren't they? That's question number one for the applicant. And that was a yes by the applicant. And virtually all of the area to be developed in the subject site is A resident, that's already been established. I'm wondering if we know what percentage of the proposed PUD is in A residence, is it 80%, 90%? What is it? Okay, I got it.
I'm sorry, we need to record what's going on, so if you guys can share that microphone, please.
Sure, ask your question.
Just ask your question, step away, let him answer, then tag back and forth.
What was the question again?
First of all, let me, I think I forgot to identify myself. My name is Peter Koenig, I'm at 221 East Forest Street, Suite 2300, 45202. I represent some concerned citizens of Clough Pike, including Susan Wheatley, her husband Anthony Becker, Guy Wolf, and Alfred Zinn. I, the question is that all the surrounding uses are A residence, and I believe you answered that one already, yes, and that virtually all of the area to be developed is also A residence, and then I wanted to know the percentage, and I think you said 90%.
I, roughly 90%.
Okay. And by my calculations, would it be accurate to say that only one lot in this 63-unit development meets the normal A residence requirements?
I think that's accurate, I haven't calculated the different square footages of all the lots.
Thank you. And roughly, I think, 2/3 of the lots are less than 10,000 square feet, and the other 1/3 is less than 6,000 square feet, both of those under the, under the code. Is that accurate as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, at least from our perspective, what we're hearing is, this is a pretty high, high-density development in area that's primarily zoned for the largest residential lots in Anderson Township, and all of the surrounding property to this one. The, would you agree with me that Clough Pike along the frontage is narrow, windy, and hilly?
Yes.
And that there's, well, blind curves along some of that stretch of Clough in the vicinity of the development?
No.
All right. What percentage of the property is in the floodplain?
I don't know what the percentage is.
Is your, you have an engineer here?
I do.
Do you know?
Not off the top of my head, it's shown graphically.
It's what?
Shown graphically. So here's the crisscrosses, that's the, that's the floodway, and then dashes are the flood zone, the 100-year floodplain.
Does it look like it's roughly half, or 30, 40%? All right, my next...
I don't know, can't answer the question.
All right. Clough Pike runs through really the center of the property, kind of meanders through, no? How would you describe?
It's on the north side of the property, doesn't, it does not meander through.
Maybe I can't see very well, but the, it looks to me like you're putting 30 lots on the north side of the development, and on the north side of Clough, I mean, the north side of, yeah, Clough, Clough Creek, no?
No, it is on the, Clough Pike is on the north side of the property.
What about Clough Creek?
Clough Creek goes through the middle of the property.
I'm sorry, I misspoke before, that's what I was trying to establish.
And I believe you said you have not commissioned a geotechnical report?
We have not.
So you haven't done any topographic, geologic, or hydrologic?
So you haven't done any topographic, geologic, or hydrologic? Sorry. So there are no topographical, geological, or hydrological investigations of the existing soils, both in the floodplain and on the entire site?
Not yet.
Have you looked at the potential for erosion, slopes, and the necessity for peering?
Not yet. That will be done when we do a geotechnical report.
Do you know what percentage of your development will have slopes greater than 20%?
I do not.
As we're here tonight, have you had any contact with the Ohio EPA?
We have not.
What about FEMA?
Have you spoke to FEMA yet?
No, but we know what they're doing.
Not yet.
The Army Corps of Engineers?
Not yet.
MSD or Stormwater Management?
Yes.
Thank you very much, that's all I have at this time. And what I would suggest is, we have Eric Russo testify, and then hear from some of the witnesses.
Is he also an attorney?
No, he's not. I'm the only attorney representing certain of the people here. I don't represent everybody here. I represent the people I identified earlier.
Okay, then he can come up and speak in opposition as well as anyone else in the audience.
Good evening, I'm Eric Russo. I'm the executive director of the Hillside Trust. The address is 710 Tusculum Avenue, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45226. The Hillside Trust, for those of you who don't know who the Hillside Trust is, we are a private, nonprofit organization that is dedicated to the preservation and the thoughtful use of our area hillsides throughout greater Cincinnati, northern Kentucky, and we were founded in 1976. Since 1990, or a little bit later, the Hillside Trust has had a history of working with Anderson Township on hillside issues, in particular, being invited to comment on certain hillside developments. I was not, however, invited to comment on this particular one here, but I heard about it through the grapevine. I personally have been with the Hillside Trust since 1989, and it's executive director since 2000. And I can say in my 30 years of experience, I've never seen a development this ill-conceived and this unrealistic for a site like this. I understand there's not any geotech report yet, and there's not a grading plan, but nonetheless, what's being proposed here is nearly impossible to do, based on the fact it's been sketched out on a one-dimensional plane that's considered to be a flat site. You have three components on this particular site. You have slopes in excess of 25% on both sides of the creek. You also have Eden soils, which are identified in the Hamilton County Soil Survey, as being located on the site. Because you also have a north-facing slope, oftentimes, north-facing slopes in Hamilton County have lakebed clades, which are remnants from the meltwater of the glaciers that came down this way. Those two soil types together are notorious for slope failures and slope instability throughout Hamilton County. Thirdly, you have Clough Creek, which is a very fast-moving tributary during rainstorms and also very erosive. I think it was a few years back, you lost a home on Clough Creek, or on Clough Pike, actually, that had to be torn down. It was less than 15 years old because Clough Creek was undercutting its parcel, both from the undercutting and also the flood potential, so the house was torn down. So there's a history of Clough Creek having problems, and this house, I think, was within about a mile east of the site. As I mentioned earlier, this plan is very unrealistic, and there's no way this concept plan could have incorporated the three components I've listed here, the slopes, the soils, and Clough Creek. To give you an example, when you cross the bridge, which I do agree with Commissioner Di Biagio's comment about a concave bridge going across, if it's not done properly, that could act as a dam to Clough Creek. That said, once you come across the bridge and begin to switch back up the hill, you're going to have such a grade change that the road itself, if you have a 20-foot setback, I'm sorry, 20-foot wide road or 30-foot wide road, you could have a grade differential between five feet to seven and a half feet from the upslope side to the downslope side.
There's no objection. I'd like for the judge to continue beyond the three minutes. Any commissioners object? Please continue.
Thank you. So that grade change, you're actually a rival on NASCAR bank embankment. That's how great that grade change would be. Then you add the setbacks of the homes upslope, you'd have to cut about 20 feet into the hill to put the foundation in. Downslope, you'd have to basically build the houses on fill or on stilts to make the grade change work out. It's not uncommon also, when you have this kind of close proximity and this kind of topography, once you begin to develop one parcel, it throws the geometry off of the parcel next to it because of the close proximity, so the geometry's constantly changing when you cut into the hillside and do the earthworks. I think theoretically, the idea of a plan new development makes sense, but unfortunately, it's designed to preserve green space, preserve your ecological resources, et cetera. And I can assure you, when this plan begins to be implemented, the level of disturbance is not going to stop where those lots end. I can guarantee you, almost that entire site's going to be clear cut of vegetation. The hillsides will be annihilated, and the dirt's going to be moved around, or to basically put the hillside, or actually, what's left of the hillside, back together again. This is really a completely egregious use of a PUD in this particular situation because of the topography, and because of the soil conditions, and because of the creek. And I think most importantly, it's going to be a red flag if you do allow this, it's going to be a problem in the future for neighboring homes to the site. It's also going to be a problem for those who buy these homes. And thirdly, it's going to be a liability for Anderson Township. And you did have an incident happen back on Laura's point back in the 1990s, we had excessive rainfall, which we're in a very excessive period of rainfall right now. We've had numerous landslides across the county, and I don't see any signs of that changing. So we've been about a 13- to 14-month period now of excessive rainfall and excessive landsliding. This site is a recipe for all the things you don't want to do to protect a hillside when it comes to development and our natural resources. That's not to say it cannot be developed, but what's being proposed here is completely out of context and infeasible to what would be really in Anderson Township's best interest.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Susan Wheatley. I live at 6104 Clough, which is on the opposite side of this proposed development, about maybe a quarter-mile down, easy, we wouldn't walk it, but an easy walk. I'm a lawyer, but I'm not a lawyer in this area. Peter is our lawyer, and I do ask that his letter, which we received, the normal course be admitted as part of the record. The, a couple of things, there was a reference to a blind curve. Those of you who know Clough probably know the curve we're talking about. I drive it every day, coming home from work and all the rest of the time, and many of us do. You come up 32, and people zoom up that hill. Some people go slowly because they're scared, because there's big drops just off that hill. They come up to the top, and people can tap their brakes, they're not sure what's coming because it takes a big, if you're coming uphill, moving eastbound, it makes a big turn up, down, and to the right, kind of an S-turn. And I always slow down coming around there, because it can be backed up. And I don't want to hit anybody, and I don't know what could be, could be a deer there. So anybody who knows I wrote it at least is careful. Take your time going around that. Now, where this proposed entrance is to this development seems completely dangerous in that that Clough Pike does back up. You get bumper-to-bumper traffic periodically along there. It's unpredictable whether it's weather, whether it's a school bus, an EMS problem, whatever it might be. But people coming up that hill, because it's a continuous green curb, green arrow coming off 32, people go, it's kind of fun to drive. You just go shoom, you know, when you're coming up the hill. But get up to the top and keep doing that, you could ram right into, and cause a chain reaction of cars that are starting to back up. And as that, that access is, it seems completely unworkable to me, and I can't imagine there will not be accidents there. So there is a blind curve there. It continues to be curvy beyond that, plus there's a drop, big drop to the right that there's been discussion about, and the berm and all of that. I also would like to say that, in connection with that, if this is going to be empty nester housing, and I'm not sure there's anything in the record that establishes more of that is needed, actually, that's going to have EMS calls, I would think. And I think the EMS part of this is critical, whether it's fire trucks coming along there. That is not the citizen's problem to figure out how the developer gets his EMS so that it suits the safety of the township and its citizens. And finally, and I see I'm going to be running out of time, if I could just have 30 seconds more, I would ask. Thank you.
30 seconds, sure.
Okay, 30 seconds, I can do it. The main thing here is this, it violates the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, which is only two years old in numerous ways. And one way is, that plan is meant to be comprehensive. It is a good plan. There's a lot of work went into that, a lot of thought. It's an impressive plan. This doesn't meet it. It doesn't meet it on, just the balance of development and environment, green space, protecting what is really a characteristic of Anderson Township. This is the western entrance gateway, and that's specifically referenced in the Comprehensive Plan. And I don't, I don't see a basis for how this, I don't see how this does anything positive in the Comprehensive Plan. It doesn't bring any businesses that are going to generate revenue. I don't see a need for these kinds of units, at least there's nothing in the record on that. And yet, there's all these other issues, and they're severe, whether they're safety, EMS, natural and environmental resources, and working collaboratively with the other agencies in this county, which obviously, if it's happened, we haven't seen any of those results. So, I will wrap up with that. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Hello, my name is Guy Wolf, and I live at 6001 Stirrup Road, and that's in Turpin Hills. My message here is that the PUD, as proposed, is inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Zoning must consider the whole plan, and numerous aspects of this Comprehensive Plan are violated, and I'll detail some of those. First, the Comprehensive Plan calls for low-density, single-family cluster residence, in part to preserve environmental resources such as hillsides or floodplains. This PUD would not preserve hillsides and floodplains, rather, there will be a significant removal of trees and vegetation, installation of detention ponds, and addition of significant impervious surfaces associated with high-density PUD housing. It would devastate our hillsides and floodplain. Additionally, the Comprehensive Plan states that on development of slopes greater than 20%, it's strongly discouraged, and when it does occur, its flexibility should be given for the clustering of homes and lots to preserve the vegetation and the natural slopes. Not only does this PUD not call for development, not only does the PUD call for development on steep slopes, but it does so in a way that places many tiny lots in a long row on the hillside, as opposed to in a cluster, in a way that will require the removal of large swaths of trees and vegetation that would otherwise support the soil. Third, the number of lots, let's face it, it's simply a mathematical artifice to maximize the developer's revenue without regard to the community or environmental impact. Quoting the Comprehensive Plan, lot sizes and subdivisions should be compatible with the adjacent development in terms of lot sizes, density, character, and scale. New development or redevelopment should not be detrimental to the general character of the surrounding neighborhoods. Ladies and gentlemen, these lot sizes are not compatible with adjacent developments in terms of lot sizes, density, character, or scale. And finally, the Comprehensive Plan also states that the most effective strategy for floodplain protection is to maintain a floodplain in a natural state to the fullest extent possible. And I look up there, and I see all these houses built right in the floodplain. According to the Concept Plan, those lots are going to be right in the floodplain. The large scope and intensity of development surrounding the floodplain, including the removal of significant natural vegetation, would similarly impact that floodplain. So approving this PUD is a mistake. The high-density housing would require this commission to essentially ignore large parts of our Comprehensive Plan. This should be denied. And if I may just have a few more seconds, I do understand that there will be a traffic study, and that's good news. My hope is that we, as an org, as a township, will consider all of the things that are going on. We have several reviews going on. We just had the Senior Living Center, that's going to generate 318 trips a day, estimated. We have another PUD that's proposed near Wolf Angel that may generate another 180. I don't, and that's my figure using the ITE manual. And then this one, which generates conservatively about 600. That's 1,100 new trips per day on this, in less than a three-mile stretch of Clough Pike. This study needs to consider not just volumes and level of service, but also the safety impact. Turning left coming out of this in rush hour traffic is going to be, is going to stack up people and make them impatient to get out. Trying to turn left coming out of here in the morning is going to have the same effect. And let me guarantee you, take it from me, empty nesters can be every bit as impatient as people who have young children at home when it comes to driving. So for all these reasons, please deny this irresponsible PUD application.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Tony Becker, 6104 Clough. And I would just, I brought some visual confirmation of the things Eric Russo was saying. I, in early January, just before the open house, I walked the creek. I came in through Skytop, put my waders on, and just walked it all the way to the proposed site and to its end. And I think these should just be entered, you can have these.
Or do you have them in a digital format we can put into the?
I do, I can send them. But you're repeatedly struck by all the trees that are eroding. This has been happening for a long time. This is not new. It's been happening for a while. These are as I'm just walking in.
Is it possible you can label on the back exactly where?
I've got them labeled detention center, which I'll give you, you can use this. By the liberty of knowing 1, 2, and 3, pictures correspond to the detention.
That's what I was looking for, thank you.
And as you get into the, into the complex, you see that this is, I believe that's 2, Detention Basin 2, you can see that's, that's the north side of that creek. Same area, the middle of the creek. Large island, west side of the creek they came from, but those are all trees, trees just fallen and taken out by the stormwater. This is the south side, at the Detention Center 3. This is by Detention Center 1. This is the soil on the north side. You can see, as I was taking the picture of one of the borders, the rocks fell in. I was scared, I turned around and I heard a splash, didn't know what it was. So this is existing, it's happening. It was, or you reiterated that in the Comprehensive Plan, page 59, that development on slopes greater than 20% is strongly discouraged. Much of that north side, at least half of those houses are on that, that's the scale of that slope. And if I can, I have one other thing. I encourage you all, if you haven't, to read the UC's Stormwater Management Plan. I don't know if you know about that. It was commissioned as part of the Comprehensive Plan of the township, and they recommend 120-foot riparian setback. There's a lot of talk about the setbacks from the Clough Road, but nothing mentioned tonight about from the creek setbacks. These detention center, I'm sorry, keep calling them centers, these basins are well within that 120 feet, I'm guessing, and right on the floodplain area of the creek. So thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Let's go forward.
Connie Alrix, I live at 5530 Clough Pike. Yes, my name is Connie Alrix. I live at 5530 Clough, which is directly opposite of the drive from this development. We've been there 15 years prior to our purchasing that property. I was aware that that empty property was there, looked up to see what the zoning was, realized that it had to be like properties with half-acre lots. I knew from my research that there were roughly 10 acres that were developable. I thought, okay, 20 houses, I'm fine with that. Now we're looking at 60-plus properties coming out at my driveway, our driveway. There's a history of previous collapse on Clough Pike. If they start digging and building those homes right there, I have concerns that if that collapses again, it traps us so that we have to make a five-mile journey around to get out of our neighborhood, number one. Number two, they said they haven't done a traffic study, but they reported what the traffic is based on history. I can tell you traffic studies. I don't have a calculator, I don't have a counter, but if you look out my house two and three times a day, traffic backs up for two miles up the road, stopped in front of my home. If you throw that housing development, or that retirement development in, and then you put this development in, and you have no control how many cars they have, but I'm thinking roughly, if somebody's going to spend that money, you're probably talking roughly two cars per property. That's another 120 cars coming out in front of my house. I believe, this is an opinion, I believe the PUD is being used to manipulate getting more properties in there. Houses one through four that are going to be above grade, you're talking roughly 10 feet, five blocks, 10 feet between those properties are the ones that are going to be sitting above grade, right in front of my house for us to look at. That's not what I bought into when I bought the property. As far as the EMS, we're not only talking about the access, but if you do get retirees, I'm thinking your EMS calls are likely going to be higher. Sirens are going to be right in front of my property, because that's the entrance. The creek floods. The whole side of our house where the creek runs down along our property line has eroded. Trees have collapsed and fallen across the creek. That's green space on the other side. We don't have control over doing anything with those. They block the drainage going into that. I can only imagine that that's going to impact what's going to happen if they develop that property below. Where's that water going to go? Is it going to back up on us, or what's going to happen? And right now, so this is kind of funny, but it's not funny. Because of the curves of that hill and the lack of any ability to pull off of the road, our driveway is used by everything from tree trimmers to CGNE to telephone lines to people that are breaking down, that have car trouble. I would say to the tune of about once a month, our driveway is blocked because of people pulling into it. And I just can't help but to think that if you have that much more traffic and stopped, that because people coming west, it's going to get worse. And I just really plead with you, you talk about the PUD is to preserve and protect the properties, the neighboring properties. This is doing nothing but destroying my property. And I, it's just breaking my heart and my bank. So, I just beg you to reconsider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Alrix, 5530 Clough Pike. We live straight across. I just wanted to say on traffic, looks like the developer picked out the cheapest way to get in and out using Clough right there, not the safest way. That's a very unsafe place to go. Over Elston would, and hooking up the Beauchamp Avenue, would be probably the safest way to go. Or through Lot 13, in that area is not quite as windy, and the sightlines are much better. Again, both of those, through Site 13 or over Elston, be more expensive, but would be much safer. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Doug, I'm sorry. My name's Doug King. I live at 2862 Patterson Farms Lane, with a big white house up on the top of the hill across the street from this proposed development. I agree with a lot of what people have already said, but there's two good legal reasons that this can't be adopted as proposed. The first is even assuming that there is 31.7 acres available for development, and I'll address that in just a second. They are in violation of the PUD agreements by proposing a higher density than is allowed under A zoning. And that is because they are proposing 63 new homes, and there's an existing home on the property. So they're putting 64 homes on 31.7 acres, which is one more home than is allowed under this type A zoning. So the density, even as proposed, is more than is permitted under the PUD development. The second thing is, I assumed that you're going by 31.7 acres as available for development. Well, that's not right, because there are streets, there are public streets running through this property. And the public streets are not part of the private development, are not part of the developable land. According to their own submission, when you take the amount of the streets, the 40-foot width or right-of-way, by the length of those streets, they're consuming 2.5 acres of that 31.7 acres as public streets. Those are not part of the lots. You cannot put 63 lots on that property, reducing 2.5 acres from the 31.7 acres you come up with. At most, they could possibly put on that property is 58 homes, and that includes the one that already exists on the property. So their proposal, on its face, violates the PUD requirements that the density be no greater than the Class A zoning requirements. On its face, that's true. The other thing, and I'll just mention that, and I don't know whether it's a typo on the resolution or whatever, but Anderson Township says that they have this right to do PUD pursuant to Section 419.01 of the Ohio Revised Code. Well, if you look at 419.01 of the Ohio Revised Code, it's a definition of agriculture. So either the township has cited the wrong statute, or as they put it online, it was incorrectly listed. Because the township does have the right to do PUD, but you can't use Section 419.01 to justify it, because that's the legal definition of agriculture. With that said, nothing more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else?
Could I make a little bit of an argument? I'll try to keep it three minutes.
Are you going to cross-examine, or?
No, I'm done cross-examining. I'm here to make a statement.
Close?
Yeah, here to close. How's that?
Please, please continue.
I think there are far too many questions to do anything tonight other than deny. I think the commission has asked some very good questions. Eric Russo had a very compelling case. I just want to hit a couple highlights. I think there's lots of questions on fire and EMS and secondary access. There's no grading plan, as was pointed out. There's significant issues on change in elevation from Clough Pike into the development. I fully didn't understand all the stuff about the berm, the buffer, the right-of-way, the setbacks. It sounds like there's an admission, I think the phrase was that the developer admits danger of curves on Clough. There can be turning lane issues, which will affect right-of-way storage lanes. Ann McBride made a very good point about the gang mailboxes, and how you're going to park to use them, what that's going to do. So I think there are lots of excessively long cul-de-sac issues. We need to know what the length is permissible. But this does not seem to be clustered housing. It's rather quite dense, and by the analysis just presented, it's over the, you know, they say it's 1.9. I think it's over 2 point, at this point. Significant transportation issues, major safety issues, line of sight issues, and those sorts of things. The volume, the speed has been talked about, the speed of cars on Clough. I'm not out here much, but when I am, people drive really fast on that road. It's very narrow, it's an old country road, and it's quite hilly, it's basically an outdated country road. At the five-mile intersection headed westbound for a mile or so, it's a, you know, it's been upgraded, and it's a very nice road. That needs to be completed all the way to, all the way to State Route 32, in my opinion, until, before you would ever even think about allowing any kind of development of this magnitude on this site. The fact that these are public streets will take away from the calculation of the developable lots. So I think you need to be very careful of what impact this will have for the public health, safety, and welfare of all the surrounding property owners. Everything surrounding this is A, and there's no reason that this shouldn't be A. They can come in and don't even need to have any kind of approvals unless they need variances to develop under A. Eric Russo pointed out the intense problematic erosion by removing trees, construction of impervious surfaces. It's going to destabilize the hillside, and the roadway is going to take away the lateral support that's already pretty weak for Clough Pike. There'll be hillside structural issues, it's going to affect every single lot in here, especially the northernmost ones close to Clough Pike. And my final point, it is contrary to the Comprehensive Plan. Comprehensive Plan calls for low-density, single-family development to preserve hillsides and floodplains. This is going to do the exact opposite. This is going to destroy the hillsides. It's going to do significant damage to the floodplain and to the Clough Creek itself, which runs through the middle of the site. It's going to really, you know, they're going to put detention ponds in, which is going to negatively impact the floodplain. So we believe that this PUD is contrary to the plan, which discourages development on slopes greater than 20%. We haven't done the analysis, but Eric Russo said there are a lot more than 20% slope development here. These are tiny lots on excessively long cul-de-sacs, they're not clustered, and PUD aims to protect the floodplain, and this would really decimate this site with all the deforestation. So we respectfully request that there's far too many questions. I don't think a continuance would be more to outline and deal with some of these questions. I think that this just needs to be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, if any of the commissioners would have questions of any of the people that came up? If anyone wants to have questions of, anyone spoke in opposition, then we'll get the applicant back up. Any questions, Commissioner? Okay. The applicant wants to come back up and address any of the, we have questions for the applicant? No? All right. Close? At this point, we'll close it then, and discuss among the commissioners. Thoughts? We'll start down at my far left, Commissioner Boone.
Well, as I reviewed this, we didn't, it felt more like a concept than a ballot. It seems like there could be some alternatives considered, particularly as it relates to the entrance to the development. And I also think that it's, I lost my train of thought here. I just think there are a lot of unanswered questions at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bajer?
I agree. To me, it seems, it's a great start, but to me, it's just a start. There's a lot that needs to be addressed. I would also personally like to see a secondary access put into these plans. I would like to see a grading plan, to have an idea of how it's going to affect things. Frankly, I'd prefer to see the lots within the floodplain removed, and that, I would like to see that 50-foot setback, which was discussed, from the back of lots one through 12, to give them a 50-foot setback to Clough. I just think that it's needed there.
Thank you.
There's not much I can add to what's been said from the audience and the other commissioners here, but I will just sort of reiterate the fact that, you know, the property is already zoned A, and it can be developed under the existing zoning. And I would, you know, really, you know, like to see a plan that supports or justifies the request for a PUD, and I don't think I'm looking at that at this moment.
Thank you. Commissioner McBride?
Yeah, I guess I concur with my fellow commission members. There's just, there's just too much missing, and this is the only opportunity we have to review this. The fact that they don't know if the length of their cul-de-sacs comply or don't comply with the Hamilton County subdivision regulations is a little bit bothersome to me. The fact that we, we don't have a grading plan, they haven't done geotech, they haven't done a traffic impact study, they haven't really done a site distance study, if they didn't do it based on a radar study. I'd like to see sections from Clough Pike looking into the development. I agree with those commission members that were talking about the 50-foot, excuse me, setback off of Clough Pike. The cross-connection issue, the secondary access emergency issue are just a few of the things that I think are hanging out there, and I just, I don't feel comfortable that we have enough information to approve this tonight. That's just my opinion.
Okay, thanks. It's easy going last, because I can say I agree with, or you took my thought. But, yeah, to me, it's, we know what we know, and there's a lot of unknowns here, and I think it's premature to come before the zoning commission till we get some more of these questions answered. Some legitimate concerns that were raised about traffic, safety, density, erosion, the wildlife, the accessibility, and the concurrence with the Comprehensive Plan. So, at this point, I will open up for a motion. We can approve, approve with modifications, deny, ask for continuance.
I would make a motion on Case 3-2019 PUD for 5531 and 5431 Clough Pike and 2691 Elston Road, that we deny the request that's before us this evening, based on the fact that there are too many outstanding issues to allow the development to move forward.
Okay, do I have a second? Great discussion about the motion.
I will second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Boone?
Aye.
Ms. DiBaggio?
Aye.
Mr. Henson?
Aye.
Ms. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. This time, please, no applause, thank you. This time, take a motion to adjourn. First off, staff, do we have a march?
We do, and I wanted to discuss that with you all. So we have the potential of having five cases on the agenda.
Excuse me, if we're going to pause, if everyone's going to exit, go ahead, we have some more business, some housekeeping, so, thank you for coming tonight. We're still in session.
So, we have the potential, or maybe?
Excuse me, if you're going to have a sidebar, can you please step outside? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Okay, so next month, March the 25th, I think, is that what we decided? We have the potential of having five cases on the agenda, so I wanted to let you all know that. We have to hear them. So I'm asking if you all want to hear them in one night, or if you would prefer to also hold a special meeting and hear them in two nights.
Personally, I will be out on the March date for spring break for children, so if we were to do it two nights, we'd have to move it to a different week, for my personal, but I don't want to uphold or hold things up. The chair will probably be here, right?
I don't know. So just throwing it out there, I mean, it could be just a marathon meeting for one night, or potential of having two nights, you know?
What, what kind of cases are you calling? Are they business cases, or are they-
We have, we have two zone changes that have been submitted to Hamilton County Regional Planning. So depending on the outcome of regional planning on March, we have Mount Washington Care Center, who has applied for an addition, so it'd be a zone change. And then Buffalo Wings and Rings has submitted an application for their corporate offices to be constructed where the former identity hair salon is on Beauchamp Avenue. That's also considered a zone change, so-
From retail to office?
From, the front portion of the property is owned retail, the rear portion of the property is owned single-family. So it would be all planned retail, is what they're proposing. So if those two cases move forward, and then we have the case, the Clark Gas Station that was continued tonight, so that's case number three. And then we have two open houses scheduled, and there's the potential that they will also submit. Well, we've had one open house, a PUD open house that was scheduled last week. They have not made a formal application, but there's ever, you know, they possibly could. And then another potential PUD case as well.
As well as what we just continued tonight?
Yes, and that one too.
So that's six.
Oh, did I miss that one? I missed it since I used auto.
Well, since I won't be here, I suggest you do it in one night.
I could be out of town really quickly.
Well, we definitely, with that many cases, it would be preferential to have seven, I mean, five members.
Sure.
So, and then we can check with Brian.
I won't be out of town.
You won't be out of town?
Well, since I probably will be here, I'd prefer the marathon, honestly.
Okay.
And I would suggest making sure that Jonathan is-
Is going to be here.
And agrees with the marathon.
Okay.
He's the chair.
Do we get a dinner break or something? Is it possible that we could take a break partway through that?
You certainly can.
Sure, just motion to break. Just a motion to break. So, okay. Good. Okay, any, motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
And I'll second it.
Roll, please.
Mr. Boone? Ms. DeBaggio?
Aye.
Mr. Henson?
Aye.
Ms. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye, thank you.